We are going to start off with some information that is going to be shared with us from the Finance Department. And after we go through that, then we will go through our funding sources that people have listed on the wish list to just discuss the viability of each of these particular funding sources. If you have your printout from any of the previous work sessions, you could go ahead and pull that out. We don't have any new ones printed today because there was no new information from our last work session. So if you do have that, great. If you don't have it, no worries. I will literally go over each funding source that is listed. So with that, we're going to get started, and I'm going to kick it over to Director Reed. Oh, and just as a reminder, our microphones are in the ceiling, everyone. So anything that you say, any side conversations, any rattling of paper or snacking will be picked up by the microphone. So just please be cognizant of that. And with that, Director Reed, we'll turn it over to you. If you want to join us, you can.
Sure.
Thanks. Move all your stuff. It's okay.
I'm really loud normally. Hello, everyone. Director Reed. Nice to see everybody today. Council Porterfield asked me to come today and explain some things that frankly you already know. So these are really just friendly reminders. So one reminder is that when we do a property tax reassessment, the revenue that comes in from property tax during that assessment year is meant to last and sustain Metro on terms of property tax revenue until we do a next assessment. So ideally, in this particular case, as you know, it's going to be three years. The other thing is Metro Finance did do a high-level analysis looking at incoming revenue and revenue projections over the next three years. Those assume slow-to-moderate growth in terms of sales tax and all other revenue. We also looked at historical trends around expenditures. And historically, over the last four years, last 20 years, our expenditures have grown at a rate of around 4%, okay? Councilmember Allen, I have to admit, I did use your lovely hand-to-hand chart. So I love her chart, by the way. If you don't have it, ask her for it. It's a great chart. So historically, expenditures have grown at 4%. We are anticipating, based off of our discussions with the University of Tennessee, who does a deep dive into revenue, that revenue in terms of sales tax is not going to be growing at the 8, 9, those high levels. It's going to be more along the lines of 1% to 2%. There is a lot of uncertainty, as everyone is aware, in terms of what's happening at the federal level as well. We did also, because I've had some questions about the budget sustainability. Why did you select 2% as the Finance Director and 4%? So we did that as well in terms of this three-year kind of look ahead. The reason we are trying to put 2% into budget sustainability is that that fund will be used to help support the expenditures in the next two years. If you, if someone actually were to bump that down, there's no money from that fund to help support anything going forward. Ideally, I would have liked to have that a little bit higher than 2%. I would have loved to have had it at 4%. But we did try to balance out tax rate with funding, expenditures, et cetera. So I just wanted to let you know, this was not, you know, there was some thought. There was some modeling that was done as part of the financial plan and some analysis done. Yes, ma'am?
So what is the difference between the 2% fund that you just mentioned between the 4% fund and the reserves?
Budget Sustainability Fund, 4% Fund and Reserves.
Okay, so the 4% Fund is by charter. And that is money that is set aside. It's 4%. And by charter, it's determined from certain revenue streams. We actually set aside 4%, and then 4% is shown kind of as an expenditure. And we do, you'll see there's on the agenda next week, 4%. And there are certain things, furniture, fixtures, computers. Well, you generally take small fleet from 4%. So it's defined in the charter what can be spent on 4%, okay? Budget Sustainability is a new terminology that was added when Council approved the Fund Balance Policy in April. And that is really what it says. It's, I equate it to kind of like a savings account, right? So if your revenues went down or your expenditures go up, you have a savings account or a rainy day fund that you could actually pull fund to help balance the budget in future years. Then there's Fund Balance Restoration as well. And Fund Balance is also per the Fund Balance Policy, and it is set at a flat 17%. That is, that 17% is two months of expenditures, and it is based off of the recommendation from GFOA. I will remind folks that the Fund Balance Policy is something that is heavily relied on by our rating agencies when they are rating us for bonds. Those, that, when we implemented the Fund Balance Policy and the new Fund Balance Policy that was approved in April really helps support that. We are saving money through the Fund Balance Policy. So through the last bond issue in October, we actually saved about $9.6 million worth of Metro's money in debt service. But in addition, we are earning money. So this year, we are anticipating earning interest on those reserves to the tune of about $34 million. Let me talk quickly about that. Those monies are not budgeted. That money helps buffer, okay, when we are having some issues. I'll use this year as a great example. In '25, as if y'all will think back to the budget presentation, I mentioned that our revenues in '25 are coming in short over budget to the tune of, our current estimate is somewhere around $70 million short. Because we have interest earnings on our reserves of about $34 million, it is cushioning that lost revenue compared to budget. And so it's, it's, it's a good thing to have the reserves because it helps buffer. If you also think back a few years when we were spending some of those surpluses and we appropriated the surpluses, that was also some of that interest money that was actually able to be appropriated through the surplus allocations. Did I answer your question thoroughly?
Yes, just to follow up. So can you give an example of when we would use the 2% Fund?
So in the 2% Fund, when we are preparing the budget next year, we will do a similar analysis, looking at revenues, looking at our expenditures, taking all of that into, into account. And if, if there are, in order to avoid cuts, for example, we would then and could drop that Budget Sustainability Fund and flow funds into the operating budget to sustain expenditures. Did that make sense? Okay.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. Why are we 70 million over budget this year?
Under budget in terms of revenue? We are under budget in terms of revenue primarily due to two things. One is our sales tax revenue. We are missing sales tax revenue to the tune of around $10, $11 million. And that, some of that is due to the economy. The other piece we are missing is property tax revenue. We have done a deep dive into that, and we believe it is related to appeals.
To what?
Appeals.
Appeals as well as the, what's called equalization ratio. So it's two factors there.
Councilmember Evan Segal and then Councilmember Evans.
I think I've asked this question kind of in different ways to different person in Finance, but never to you directly. Have we, knowing that appeals have, over the past several years, affected our, our actual revenues, are we looking at the formula we use there to calculate anticipated revenues based on that loss?
Yes. So the appeals factor is factored into two different ways when we prepare the revenue budget for property tax. One way is there's what's called the Appeal Allowance in terms of the actual rate, okay? So that's one, one factor. The second way we incorporate the appeals allowance into the property tax budget is through an actual collection reduction. So instead of saying, hey, we think we're going to collect 100% of this revenue, we automatically back that down to a certain percentage based off of historical information.
Okay, so it adjusts then kind of automatically based on that historic information?
It, it will adjust when we set the new rate. And then we also do look at the collection percent on an annual basis. Yes, ma'am?
Councilmember Evans?
I was just going to ask, kind of piggybacking on Chair Gambis' question about the Budget Sustainability Fund, kind of using the Metro General appropriation that we did this year. Since we didn't have that fund this year, next year, like if we had to do another special appropriation, would the default be to the Budget Sustainability?
It's a great question, and it would require some analysis before we did that. But that could potentially be a funding source. And when you say general, I just want to make sure, general, hospital, supplemental?
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
I'm just trying to make sure I understand how you fit, how you did the budget, so for the property taxes. So we had them out for all the property taxes from this previous year. And then I guess y'all took that. And then you projected based on permits pulled or what was being built and what was going to be finalized and added that to this, to the property tax? So I'm just trying to figure out how you, how we got $70 million off if we were going on the same tax rate as last year and we knew what we were collecting already and you know what's in the pipeline coming to be finished when the taxes start coming in. I'm just trying to figure out, how do y'all figure that?
So if I understand your question correctly, you are trying to figure out why we were 70 million short?
Yeah, from the property tax.
So we were not, let me be clear, we were not 70 million short in terms of property tax. That's the total revenue miss. So let me be clear on that.
You just said we were $70 million because of property tax.
That was one portion of it.
So how much, how much is it short from the property tax revenue?
Fortyish. So it's about 40 in property tax. We're missing sales tax around 10 or 11. And then there's some other small misses in the overall total revenue.
Now, how do appeals affect that if we already knew what we were collecting last year? We knew those people were getting it, and we know what's in the pipeline going to be finished. What, 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 what made that off, that 40 million?
For one moment, for the councilmembers that are just joining us, welcome. Thank you so much. We have Director Reed that has given us some information about the overall budget. If this is your first work session, the microphone is in the ceiling, so everything you say is being picked up. So all side conversations and any eating and any movement is being picked up very loudly on MNN. So I just want to make sure that you all are aware of that. Director Reed? You forgot the question.
Yeah, I did. I was so listening.
Yeah, you gotta make it all over again.
And I know. Are you asking about the 40 million?
Yes.
So the appeals, so when the appeals hits in actual, like hits the revenue and there's a reduction, it all depends on when the appeal is heard and when it is settled. So we cannot determine, Finance can't really determine when that appeal is going to be settled and when there's going to be a credit to the tax roll, if that makes sense. We do our best job to predict that. We use a lot of algorithm. We use a lot of predictive modeling. We work hand-in-hand with the University of Tennessee. But in terms of actually predicting and, and being precise about when that appeal is actually going to settle, because a lot of these are at the SBOE, the State Board of Equalization, not necessarily at our local appeals, it's hard, really difficult to determine exactly when that appeal is going to settle. But it, it gets credited to the revenue in the year that the appeal actually settles, if that makes sense.
So who would have been appealing unless, because a lot of people appealed because of the tax rate, the tax rate went up. So who would have been appealing that you would have been looking at?
So these appeals go back '17, '18, '19, '20. There is a, there is a backlog of appeals, and I shouldn't nearly use the term backlog. But there are appeals that are still pending from 2017 forward.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Councilmember Welsh, for that question. We have Councilmember Allen, then Councilmember Druffel, because he's on committee, and then we'll go to Councilmember Welsh. Councilmember Allen, you're recognized.
Chairman Chair, so just to, to take the three-year look again. My understanding is the Sustainability Fund is, is, is sort of, we know that we don't want to raise taxes except for once because we usually time it with the appraisal. An alternative theoretically would be not to put as much in the Sustainability Fund because we were comfortable raising taxes a little bit every year or something like that. Can you sort of speak to the strategies between those two possibilities?
That's exactly correct, is that, is that typically, and, and remind you, we have only raised taxes three times in the last 20 years. Margaret Darby did a beautiful job on, on her memo. And, and so we've only really raised taxes, and they have generally all come in an appraisal year. And that has been the historic practice. The alternative is to raise taxes every year, is, is really what you're, you're mentioning, I think, Councilmember. As you all know, we are moving to a three-year cycle. And I think there is potential to move to a two-year cycle. If you move to a two-year cycle, then ideally, tax increases would be smaller. They would be a little more predictable for our homeowners and our property owners. And you could prepare a little bit more, I will say. And I, personally, I believe that is something that we could all get behind for our, you know, for your constituents, for the, for my folks. I know we would appreciate that. And I think that's your question, Councilmember. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Druffel, you're recognized.
Thanks, Chair. On the optional sales tax, in the last few years, we've been significantly over. It's always been one of our saviors. And yet, we're a couple percent under this. Can you comment on how or why we are short from our forecast or the model that you use? Because if you look at our economy, it looks extremely strong. So I was just curious as to what, why we came up with a shortfall so much in that area.
We truly believe that it is related to the economic conditions and a more global impact. I think, you know, there has been a little bit of a slowdown, and that is impacting Nashville.
Do you, do you model it by hospitality, field, and other different areas? Or is there like a segmentation component to it that might help define the difference? Only because if you're going to have this now, the future would probably represent the similar trends.
Yeah, I would ask Budget Director Pratt to give, talk a little bit about his, the methodology that is used and the work that they do with the University of Tennessee specifically around sales tax.
Yeah, Aaron Pratt, Budget Officer. So yeah, we actually look at specific categories for each one of those sales tax categories. We work with UT, who does the global economics and then also the state of Tennessee economics forecast for those specific categories. And then we also partner with our local, local convention authorities and things like that to make sure that we're understanding what they're seeing in the market as well to be able to come up with an analysis of what we can project for future revenues. And then we, we monitor those revenues over the course of the fiscal year. And then because, you know, things happen, weather plays an impact, you know, the economic condition plays an impact, changes in the economy, political status plays an impact. And then we continually monitor those specific categories, hotels, alcohol beverage tax, and other, other items in the sales tax categories to make sure that we trend up and down and revise those, those projections to make sure that we are being conservatively accurate. So we do make revisions on a monthly basis to make sure that we are not just, that we're being intentional to look at those specific revenues.
Was there any category that was unique that showed a decline that impacted your total number?
So, and this could be found at the state as well, because we track the state reports as well, the state reports. Wholesale beer, alcohol has seen declines. And then also, we've seen some decline in just other categories of specific, depending on the weather as well, we track the forecast. Look, our sales tax will, a year-over-year perspective will drop. So then we revise that based on what has happened to then re-forecast. So we, we, we look at as much as we can, we love data, to figure out what's going on.
Thank you for that, Mr. Pratt. Thank you, Councilmember Druffel. We're going to go to Councilmember Welsh, and then we do have more information that we need to get through from Finance, y'all. It's 4:23 and committee meetings start at 5 o'clock, and we still need to get through funding sources. And today is the last day. So I just want to kind of, kind of bring everybody, thank you so much, Councilmember Druffel. But thank you for everyone that's asked these questions. They have been great questions. I also want to make sure that everyone knows that the, all of the previous work sessions that we have had are all on YouTube and MNN. So you can also watch those to kind of get caught up on some of the things that we've discussed as well as directing questions to Finance and Director Darby if you have additional questions that we don't get to get to today. Did you have anything else that you needed, Director Reed, I mean, that you wanted to share, Director Reed, before we went to Mr. Pratt?
No, that was it. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. And I apologize that I cannot stay for the rest of the working session, but we are...
Oh, I'm so sorry. I forgot, Councilmember Welsh, she had a question. My apologies.
This is getting back a little bit to the sales tax because I'm hearing echoes of my former colleague Bog Mendez telling us about pilots that we've passed and payments. And has that impacted us at all in terms of the pilots that we've approved in the past?
It, it's a great question, and that is, that has already really been factored in. What we're really seeing is, is a little bit of the slowing of the sales tax. We really enjoyed a really robust period of sales tax growth coming out of COVID. And we did a lot, to your point, it was, it was better than budget. And we were relying on those, and it did develop a lot of those surpluses. And we are really seeing those even off. And it's not that we're not growing in sales tax, but it's just not growing at the rate that we were, if that makes sense. But great question.
Thank you, Director Reed. And then now we will be joined by Mr. Pratt, who has some information for us as well.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It was a very, talked just at a very high level to begin with, and then we can go into specifics of what we were seeing on the wish list items as far as funding sources. This last budget was probably easier to do than this budget. But I can say right now, in talking categorically, this, this is a tight budget. You know, we had to do things in this current budget to make sure that we were sustainable for the next couple of years. So as far as funding sources, there is no funding sources from a budget perspective that I would say I'm comfortable or would be comfortable with, you know, pillaging like we did last year to, to fund things, especially if things are on an ongoing basis versus a one-year or one-time-only basis. So looking at the categories that, you know, we, we touched last, in this last budget, you know, the, the insurance accounts, this, this last budget, this current one we're in, we went down at almost 90, 95% in those funds. We took it all to the funds of things, and we did some really great things. But we, globally, you all did some really great things. But as we, as we closed out last year's session, we talked about that this was going to be the year where we had to replenish that because we're currently drawing off of fund balance, we're currently drawing off of the unknowns. And thankfully enough, you know, we're, we're, we're in June, we're almost home stretch of getting out this year. So hopefully, nothing else happens. But things do happen, just like we all know today. Something happened. And that means that we have to go into the funds that, you know, we would have normally looked at to touch to say, we can't touch those funds because now payments have to be paid out in this fiscal year to be able to, you know, get our assets back online through insurance costs, insurance, and things like that. But other, other factors that are playing into this budget as well, and the one of the biggest ones is from 2025, this current budget, we did targeted savings. It got us through to this point. But the restoration of those targeted savings into the departments' account because departments are really struggling. And we've worked with them, OMB has worked with them, Finance has worked with them. We, we, we were really creative and creating some solutions for them to be able to continue to function this year and respond to things that we, we knew that were going to happen, but we didn't really know exactly what was, what they were. So we've made room and opportunities for those departments to continue to get through the year and still try to meet the targeted savings. So, because that was important. Our balanced budget is based on that targeted savings amount. And then overperformance in targeted savings for some departments because we, we expected some departments would do like they always do and just, you know, save because that, that's what they do. They are really good. And then some departments will have things that come up that they would have to spend. And we will not impact departmental services for any of those reasons. So we made allowances, said, yeah, we'll, we'll revert back, we'll try again, we'll, we'll do this. But that service that needs to be performed has to be performed. So departments, restoration of their targeted savings and even the additions that they got are, that are currently in the mayor's recommended budget are just a lot of the things that, you know, they probably needed in this current fiscal year. Things that we knew that were coming online for, like, instance, the ninth precinct operations cost that, you know, we couldn't give to departments and offices last year that they really need those operating costs in addition to the targeted savings. So we funded some of those things. And then one of the biggest aspects of any department on this budget is their ability to use their budget wisely, of course, with, with our guidance, to make sure that they stay within their budget. Because the fund balance, sustainability, and reserve and things like that are great. But we want to make sure that we don't have to come to you all for a supplemental. That's the part where everything happened and we tried everything we could. But if a supplemental is needed, that means that that's drawing on our savings reserves. And that means that that affects future availability. So departments utilize salary savings, they utilize underspending in their operating accounts. They utilize everything they can to make sure that they stay within budget. That's going to be more so, I believe, impactful in fiscal year '26 because of the compensation plan that's being proposed. The compensation plan doesn't fund vacancies. So what that means is that when those staff do come online, because at the snapshot, we didn't capture the vacancy amount that was needed to fully fund the full staff for a department, a big department like an NDOT or Parks, we have to work with those departments and look at their vacancies throughout the year to manage their total budget, to make sure that they still stay within budget but still can offer the compensation package that was approved by Council. So we are utilizing every single thing in a department's or office's budget to, one, make sure that they stay, that they can live within their budget that you all have granted them, but also that we do not have to come back and deal a supplemental or our supplemental is saved for the extreme needs of Metro like we did this year.
Thank you. Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Pratt? Councilmember Welsh and then Councilmember Prepti.
Do we happen to know what departments, if any, are going to be returning money to the General Fund for this fiscal year?
Yeah, hopefully all of the departments because of the targeted savings. We, we continue the analysis on a month-to-month basis. And of course, year-end close this year has got six days accrual for payroll. So we need to really focus on the, the full year. But we expect that departments meet their targeted savings and that we, total budget Metro, have some, because we, we did a projection of potential savings that would roll into fund balance that got us to the starting fund balance amount for fiscal year '26 that started the budget process. So then that way, we can know how much of the reserve and sustainability that you can put into this budget to get us through the next couple of years. So we, we do expect some departments to return some unused funds to the fund balance. But that's already projected in this, I'm so sorry. That's already projected, that's already projected in this current fiscal year '26 budget.
Thank you, Councilmember Welsh. Councilmember Prepti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this, I think we've already answered my question. Just wanting to make sure that I was clear in clarifying, from what I recall from the last budget cycle, that vacant positions, vacant positions that have been funded but not filled at the end of the fiscal year, those funds go back to the General Fund?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Councilmember Prepti. Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. I guess on the salary savings part, like if you're thinking about the departments that have, and I'll use MMPD as the example, you know, where you know that they've got like program classes. And if a class doesn't make, and you know that it's like, I heard that a lateral class didn't happen. And so when you, I guess, how do you forecast, like, if that isn't happening, and maybe they're going to try to use the salary savings for something else? But at what point do you go, after, you know, February, if this class hasn't happened, we know that money's coming back to the General Fund?
That's a good question. We've worked with those departments who have classes like fire, police to, to, to understand the timing of those classes being fulfilled and the transit, especially for MMPD, the transition of those trainees into the PO2, which is a higher-paid position. So that transition from the trainee which is a higher-paid position. So that transition from the trainee to the PO2 is one portion, but then also if those classes do not happen, we have to, and we do assume and we watch, that there's going to be some overtime costs that, that's needed, because those are officers who are firefighters who are on the streets. So we look at the overtime costs and other things that they have to do, maybe they're, they're contracting out more. So we look at their total budget to see, well, since that class didn't occur, what's your next plan to make sure that you're, you're at least providing the services that you intended to provide with that class, or are you going to offer a bigger class? So we, we work with them, again, utilizing their whole budget, because we, especially with public safety, we want to make sure that the services are rendered.
I just wanted to, I guess, piggyback on, like, I kind of, this was a conversation I know we had a lot of last year on the budget, kind of around the timing of, kind of the approval process related to if there's money that potentially salary savings that would be going back to the general fund, some departments having the flexibility to use it independently and not have kind of a further centralized HR discussion, and then some departments kind of feeling like, or needing to kind of get more context or follow-up or feedback. And one thing I had asked about, it was too late to put in the last budget, was how will we learn the impacts of kind of those conversations? Because I would like to know, and I know, like, Chair Tooms led the working group, kind of looking at some of those positions this year, like, how do we know to be able to forecast correctly kind of in this group? Like, departments that are making decisions independently versus, like, and I hate, you know, just using, like, I'm going to hire a bunch of people, and then I don't hire them, but instead I'm using to plug other holes, but we don't necessarily know what those holes are. And so how have we improved from last year to this year, or have we at all? Because I still feel like we're kind of in a, we don't have information on that.
Yeah, I, I would say, this is an excellent question. We've improved, I mean, we've improved our communication, and we always work, I mean, we're fully staffed this year, thank you, to be able to engage with our departments and our component units and the subsidized component units, to be able to understand their budget a little bit more. But, you know, we also track, you know, the hiring, we, we are part, we, we own position control, so we are a part of the recruitment process. But as far as, you know, the, the, the departments being able to utilize the monies, we, we ensure that they give us a plan, that we communicate with them thoroughly, that it's reflective in the bar report, that's online, that we, and even this year, we, we worked to make sure, because of targeted savings, that we were really on top of it to make sure that, okay, what are you doing with that dollar? What are you doing with that, that quarter? Because we need every single amount we can get. So we've tried to improve the communication, still trying to work on a formalized process. You know, we are going through Oracle upgrade in the next year or so, and we, we're making some changes to the system from a budget perspective, to make sure that those kind of things, where you're moving money around and doing things like that, right now we do track it and we have it in the system, but now we're going to have some ability to do some reporting on that, to make sure that, you know, it's documented from a workflow perspective, department to us, to approval factors, to make sure that at least we have some record of what happened and what they did, and then make sure that, you know, isolate trends where we can, and make sure that we, we have more transparency.
Thank you, Councilmember Druffel.
Yeah, a question on, as many departments have news, more staff, how did you model that with the reduction in overtime? For example, a lot of them, I'm sure, are accounting for, to meet necessary standards, they're, you know, a lot of overtime. How'd you account for that?
So working specifically with the departments who, who do have overtime and who do have the classes, we make sure to understand, you know, the, the class success rate. We understand, we work with them to understand how many classes they intend to do, and if there's any nuances, it's aware classes don't start on time, or they didn't get enough applicants. And then we look at, you know, the services, I feel like I'm just, keep saying please, the police services that are being rendered, special events, anything like that that may have additional draws on overtime, and then monitor their budget on a monthly basis and check in with them to make sure that, you know, we're looking at not only on the trainee aspect, the, the, the actual staff aspect, PO2s and up, but also the special events aspect, and then also the, anything that does arise where they need to be called out for any, any event. We, we track that on a monthly basis, and, you know, it shows itself in the bar report, but maybe not as specifically as, you know, as you elevated right now, but we do track that and make sure that we are trying to minimize overtime as much, or if we do see that they are having trouble, and this is with any department, having trouble filling their vacancies, then we expect, you know, overtime or contracted services or a specific account, object account going up. And then we work with them to say, is that because of this, or is this because of that?
And, and just a quick, my, my intent was, did you budget that way, is that new staffing would then reduce overtime?
Uh, on a long-term basis. We, we do model out that, you know, if they get X amount of staff, then X amount of staff would equal a decrease potentially in, in some of those consultant services accounts or, you know, overtime accounts.
Thanks. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Druffel. Did anyone else have any questions for Mr. Pratt? Okay, so a couple of things that I wanted to go through, and we are looking at the time, it's 4:40. I, I think there may have been some confusion about some of the processes with the wish list, so I just wanted to kind of speak it into the room and lift something up. Historically, before the second termers, before, so this may predate me, this may be in the, the times, maybe Councilmember Allen may remember some of this, Councilmember Weiner may remember some of this, but there used to be more of a process where the chair kind of put together this substitute, and this is what was offered to the body, and over the last few years, definitely last council term, I believe, a little bit in the term before that, we've kind of tried to make a more collaborative process, where we do these working sessions, where we get people to come, and council members talk about, these are my wish list items, these are the places where I feel comfortable making cuts from. Ultimately, those cuts will come from the discussions that I have with Finance and with Director Darby, like, this is a package that is being put together, that's being presented to the council. The activity of the wish list is an effort to be collaborative. It is an effort to hear from colleagues on where there's synergy around places that they may want to see cuts, or places where they may want to see additional funding. So I say all that to say, as we, you know, Mr. Pratt kind of touched on the danger of reducing some of these funds, and I'll, I'll go back to him in just one moment to speak specifically on a couple of these funds. He's kind of spoken to, like, the danger of reducing these funds. It is not going to be solved in here tonight about, yes, we are definitely making a cut from this place that is going in the substitute. The purpose of this is to kind of help explain, so when you all see the substitute, and maybe you see that there wasn't a big cut to judgment and losses, you will understand why that cut was not there. So you may have proposed that, but that may not have made the substitute, because it just, that fund may be already bare bones, and there may not be any additional things that we can cut from that fund. So I think some council members were thinking that the wish list was, this is exactly where you're going to pull that money from. That's not really the way that it operates, but it is more for the knowledge of the body and for the view and audience, so that people can't understand why we are making certain additions and cuts. One other thing that I wanted to lift up, because something else that I've, you know, kind of heard floating was, you know, maybe we don't fund something this year, and maybe we fund it next year, in an effort to possibly reduce the rate of the, the current tax rate. Whatever the tax rate is now is generating our funding for the next three years, and I believe Director Reed or Mr. Pratt may have said that, I think y'all both have may have said it at some point in time, actually. So if there is a reduction now, that is a reduction for the next three years. So it's not a, we can't fund this now, but maybe we could fund it next year. It is a, we can't fund it now, we can't fund it for the next three years, unless you are able to find funding by cutting something else in the next budget. Would you, did I describe that correctly?
Very eloquently, yes.
Okay. So I wanted to make sure that that was kind of understood. I know that one of the top things that we heard during the budget, during the public hearing from the budget, something that a lot of council members talked about, like, in work sessions, and something that we saw on those wish lists, additional funding for Metro employees was like the number-one request. I've already stated at this point two to three times that it is my intent to try to find that additional 1% so that we can make sure that we match the civil service recommendation, but to be extremely clear, that means that there has to be $8 million in cuts in other places. So that means that when you see a substitute budget, that 1% is in that substitute budget, that means that we have to have enough cuts to justify or to balance out those additional things. So really quickly, we're going to talk about just the funding sources that were on the wish list. We, I don't know that there are representatives from all the departments here, so if you were the council member that made the recommendation to put the cut there, if you had a conversation with that department, I will briefly give you, and it has to be very brief, I will briefly give you a moment to speak on, if you had a conversation with that department, and what that department said, that the reduction of services would look like if there was a cut there. The first four sources that were recommended were the self-insured liability fund, judgments and losses, contingency utility increase, and self-insured excise tax. So all of those were recommended cuts from council members on their wish list that fell outside of departments. So, Mr. Pratt, if you could speak to those funding sources, if any of those in the mayor's proposed budget, if there is any cushion in those funds that we will be able to pull from?
Again, I'll, I'll go back to my high-level statement. I wouldn't pull from anything, because there's, there's risk. There's a risk to all of this. I, I think it's really important to understand that, you know, we budget these funds, sorry, we, we law, OMB, Finance works to work with the actuaries to, to look at what needs to be in these, in these accounts and these funds, to be able to pay for things that may happen. So Law has done a lot of work with, with their actuarial consultants and stuff, and self-insure judgments and losses, and some of their other insurance accounts are the ones that actually pay for the things that, you know, are Metro liabilities and obligations. So it's kind of pre-planning to pay for those things that may happen, or that may be incurred but not, you know, expensed at that present moment. We don't know. That's why we budget for those kind of things, and that, those are appropriate accounts for it to come out of. We don't want that coming out of the general fund anywhere else. We want that coming out of the law-associated accounts. Contingency, utility, contingency accounts in general are for that. I mean, we try to put everything in the budget that we know about that historically has happened. You know, utilities, you just don't know the usage of, of our assets. So the contingency utilities as departments may have it in their budget, but general services may be taking ownership of space that has been moved out of. We have to make sure that we have something in the budget to where we don't have to do a supplemental. We can go back to and say, okay, this meets the criteria for contingency utility account. We can JE the, or we can put the funds there, or put the expenditures there, because it's associated with something that is for the metro-wide expense, and which is, a lot of the admin accounts are for the metro-wide expenses, things that don't really fit with a department sometimes, or may fit with a department, but the projection was conservative, and, you know, things happen, like, you know, electricity went up, or utility costs went up. So, so those are those kind of accounts, and that's why, you know, again, I lean back to today, you know, the tragic event with our asset at the library, downtown library. That's something, that's our asset. We own it. So that's something that, Raj, we now have to make sure that we have the funding for, to make sure that it's repaired and that, you know, it's back to working condition. So those accounts are really important for us to be able to not have to come back to you all because of time and process to get a supplemental pass, that we can react to those, those occurrences right away.
Thank you so very much. Councilmember Evans Segal, and just real quickly, y'all, it is 4:47 and committee starts at 5 o'clock, and we have a list of department things that I want to give people very briefly the opportunity to touch on, why they believe that is the item that should be cut. So if we could be really brief.
It's going to be super quick. On the contingency utility fund, one thing we heard over and over in our working group led by, by Chair Tooms, was that departments were tapping into employee positions not filled in order to pay their utility costs. Are those departments that aren't able to use the contingency utility fund, or is the contingency utility fund available to all departments?
So, I'm sorry, I don't know that reference, and I'll have to go back to that, but, you know, they, they should be using other line accounts in their operating budget to be able to do that, but if there was some, something that happened, you know, we may have worked with them to move money from above the line at a one-time, move to below the line to be able to pay for their liabilities, their expenses. But, you know, we do work with departments, especially on a year-end basis, internal to Finance, to make sure that we're covering those obligations, and we have a place to make sure that those obligations can go for utilities by department. The department may not, just not know about it, that we've done that to close out the year. So the, the contingency accounts are more like, throughout the year, if something big happens, but at end of the year process to make sure that we can close the year balanced.
All right. Thank you so very much. So in the interest of time, we're going to do this very briefly. I am going to say the department that showed up in the wish list. To be extremely clear, I am not saying that I am in favor or in opposition of making cuts to any of these departments. I am simply reading an item that was on the wish list. And if you were the person who said you wanted to cut that item on the wish list, I will give you 25 to 30 seconds to briefly tell us why you believe that that needs to be cut, and if you have had a conversation about what the impact will be. So we're not going to deliberate any cuts, you are just speaking it into the record, and we're moving on to the next person. Everybody clear? Great, thank you. The first item is MNPS. Anybody want to speak on why they want to cut schools? Nope? Okay. Police Department. Councilmember Welsh?
I just very briefly told the chief that I was going to recommend not funding any new programming this year and move that budget into, to other, that, that money into other things that I think are more important, and that are what people in the community were asking for. I didn't hear anyone asking for an increase in funding for MNPD, and I think that that is a fair thing, that, that MNPD can be flat for perhaps the first time in, in many, many years in terms of their funding.
Thank you, Councilmember Welsh. Finance. That request came from the Immigrant Caucus.
Page six.
Uh, it's page six. I'll come back to y'all while y'all working together. The Office of Homeless Services. You want to speak on it? Councilmember Welsh?
That was also me, because I have been looking at the, the monthlies of the year, and there seems to be, there's a fair amount of waste, what I would consider to be wasted that an actual, an internal audit right now is looking into. But I think that there are some, some money there that could be cut, perhaps a million dollars, two million and a half dollars, that would not impact the housing, urban, unified housing study or anything else, but, and I just believe that the department will still be able to function in the way that it has been functioning.
Okay. Thank you. Property loss. That was Councilmember Sora and the Immigrant Caucus. I'll come back to them. Assessor of property. Does anybody who, does anyone remember who made that recommendation?
Who is Councilmember Benedict?
Councilmember Benedict, thank you. She's not here. Planning Commission. Waste Transfer Services. Public Education Foundation. Councilmember Welsh?
Once again, it's me. They actually have quite a healthy budget, and I don't think that, that hundred thousand, taking a hundred thousand dollars from them this new, this year is going to impact them, but it could be better directed to other things.
Thank you. Consulting Underwriting Services for Housing. Councilmember Welsh?
I would say that I would cut half of that, because I don't think that we would need that for the consulting aspect, but for the other half, they need it, so I would cut that in half, the five thousand plus thousand dollars to two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Going back to the Immigrant Caucus, did y'all want to talk on Finance?
Yes, sorry about that. Thanks, Chair. I think we were thinking it would be more appropriate to match with Councilmember Welsh's plan to take it from the funding source from MNPD, so instead of Finance.
Okay, thank you. And then the other option, the other one was property loss, I believe, was yours also?
Yeah.
And if you don't have an answer right now, it's okay, if you don't want to speak to it.
I just need to look at which one.
It was on page 24 for the Library Services.
Oh, yes, this one, we just, you know, we're trying to figure out where would be best to support the bookmobiles, and so when we're looking through the best funding source, I think we were just trying to find one that might be most neutral. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Those were the only funding sources listed, so we went through that fairly quickly. Thank you all so much for your support in that activity. So just going forward, did you have a question?
Yeah, just, just very quickly, and as it particularly relates to NPL and the property loss fund, given everything that's happened with NPL just over the past, like, 12 hours, am I correct in assuming that the property loss fund would be where we draw? in assuming that the property loss fund would be where we draw upon to repair the library and the parking garage and everything?
Mr. Pratt, can you speak to that?
We would have to get with legal to figure out what's the best course for that, I'm going to be in this current fiscal year, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilmember Hill?
Can you ask people when they speak to speak up a little louder, because when they're facing you, maybe some of us older folks may have a little bit more of a harder issue hearing, so.
Gotcha. So the question was from Councilmember Prepti, who said, because the parking garage at the library caught on fire and had some damage, should we assume that that is going to come out of the property loss account? And Mr. Pratt said that we would have to get with legal, but that's happening this fiscal year, so we would have to get with legal to make the determination of how that's going to have an impact.
Thank you so very much for that, appreciate it.
Thank you. Got covered, got covered, Tom? Okay, so we have less than six minutes left. So basically, what happens from the process now, you all, thank you all so much, thank you for everyone that has been coming to the work sessions, who came to the department hearings, who have submitted questions, who worked through the wish list, I really appreciate all of your effort. Just so you all know, we had about 83, was it 83 million? It was about $83 million in unique requests from the wish list, so once we took out the duplicates, it was about 83 million, and that's not including some of the additional that people wanted to see for the pay plan on top of that, which would have been like another 45 million or so, so we're looking at over $127 million in requests, and I'm sure you all know that there is no universe where we can actually get to that. So please know that I will do my best to honor the will of the body and I will try to put together a substitute that I believe honors what we heard from the community, honors the priorities of a council, honors my priorities as the budget chair, so I will do my best to make sure that that information is accessible to you all. You all will have that substitute this week, so that you all will have the opportunity to review it prior to our council meeting where we vote on it on next Tuesday. We're going to wrap this meeting up, and we do have a 5 o'clock joint committee meeting upstairs with planning and budget for the CIB, and then our CIB meeting will actually be at 6:00 PM. Councilmember Nash, did you have a question?
Just to stand, I know we had a public hearing on the budget and heard a lot of folks wadding stuff, and I was surprised that there weren't a lot of people there talking about no new tax increase, I expected some, but I don't know about other folks, but I hear a lot of that from my constituents through social media and the like, so don't forget that part of the meeting.
Absolutely, and I think one thing that I am asking people is what they would like to see cut, because realistically, people don't want to pay an addition in taxes, but they still want the same services, and that's just not realistic. So if they don't want a property tax, if they don't want their property tax rate adjusted, then we're going to have to find about $500 million to cut, and I don't see a universe where we get there, so, sorry about that. I don't see a universe where we get there. So my substitute budget, it has the same tax rate as the proposed tax rate from the mayor. It was, we discussed it previously, I looked every single way to see if that could be reduced, there was no way that I could get to a reduction in the budget. If we'd made a small reduction, there was a way that we could possibly knock it down by like a penny or two, or when we looked at that, maybe a taxpayer's bill goes down by about $8 to $16, but we're losing millions upon millions in services, so it got to the point where, as y'all have heard me say it, Councilwoman Tooms knows that I'm going to say, the juice isn't worth the squeeze, like if you're saving 15 bucks a month, but we're losing, you know, decimating a department's budget to get there, it just unfortunately may not be worth it, but, I mean, we'll have to decide on it next week, but thank you all so much, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.